I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, sir.
No.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting?
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, if a few of you are wondering about what this is all about, we've got a real celebrity here tonight that we'd like to honor. In recognition of Allegheny County native and baseball great Bobby Robertson, we wish to welcome all who came to this special recognition event. Bobby Robertson had an exemplary professional baseball career. He was an outstanding athlete in high school, starring not only in baseball, but also in basketball and soccer. A few of his baseball milestones, Bobby played in the first ever night game of the World Series in 1971. He played and scored in the final game at Pittsburgh's famed Forbes Field before a sellout, standing room only crowd in 1970. Forbes Field had been home to nearly 5,000 baseball games over 61 years. Bobby also hit the first homerun ever hit into the left field upper deck of Pittsburgh's new Three Rivers Stadium. Now, here's Barbara Robertson to share some of his personal memories. Please.
Somebody told me I gotta talk right into those things, so that's what I gotta do. First of all, I'd like to recognize my friends and my family for coming here tonight. Over there's Charlie Thomas, he was my manager down at Patton Air. He's a good one. You boys ever looking for a good management, right there he is. Carla, his wife, and then I got Tyler. Tyler's a good basketball player up at Bell. Things, well, we'll get into that. But I wish you luck, maybe next year you can get on that team and show them what you got. So, thank you for showing up. We have Denny Carter, and we have Betty, his wife, from Mount Savage. We do some karaoke together sometimes, and the dogs bark and all that stuff. And then my lovely wife Carolyn. She was a good baseball lady, she kept me straight all them years. We had the kids, Janine and Julie, in Pittsburgh, and then we'd come back here during the offseason. So, she took the kids a lot of times in April, and I told her to stay home, but she'd bundle them up and go to a ballgame. So, I thank her for all those years and all that kind of stuff. And then my oldest daughter, Janine, I won't tell them how old you are. Tim's not here, Tim Civic. I think they're waiting on a couch or something to be delivered. So, I told him, you know, excuse him. And then you have Caleb. Caleb, good baseball player, good basketball. He's now going to Fort Hill. And then I have Colton. Colton can hit them like Pappy used to hit them, high and far. He plays for Buzanik out at ACC. He's went to a few tryouts. Philadelphia has their antlers out for him and all that kind of stuff. And they're good athletes. I have seven grandchildren, by the way. They're all good athletes. I guess they come out of a pretty good loion somewhere along the way. Then I got Julie. She's my youngest daughter. She's out in Mount Joy with, let's see if I can remember all these names. I got Grace. Grace has been scouted, she's in the ninth grade, but they play field hockey out there. So, there's some scouts from these colleges are looking at her now. And then Lydia's in the softball. And then I got Emma, she's in the basketball and softball. And little Christian, he's seven. He's gonna be a good, I don't know if he's gonna go for football or not, but he's a good little baseball player. So, they're out in Mount Joy. They couldn't be here tonight, but that's okay. So, I appreciate you all showing up. And this ain't gonna take long, 'cause I'm a man of very few words, right Dave?
Yes, sir.
Oh, there's one gentleman here I'd like to, Joe Carter. He's one of the reasons why I'm standing up here tonight, 'cause he was my high school coach. And I liked the way he coached, 'cause back then, you know, we learned the basic fundamentals of the game of baseball. I think coaches sometimes nowadays, you really have to get back to the basics of the game. And there's some kids that are better than other kids, and if you can go to those kids that sometimes don't play regular and stuff like that, where you can build confidence in them to let them know that they still belong on that team, and you can work with them. And I was one of those guys. My brothers wouldn't let me play with them whenever I was younger, couldn't hit the ball as far as they did, but I figured, ah, I'm gonna fix this. So, I practiced a lot. Remember how you used to choose up, you had the bat, and then you choose up who gets picked first and stuff like that? Well, after a while, I was pretty much the first one to get picked. But I lived in Old Row, very proud of Mount Savage. I learned a lot from Mount Savage, and especially with Joe Carter, 'cause I remember you used to have to walk to school. Coming down after school one night, I asked Mr. Carter, I said, "Mr. Carter, how do I make that baseball team yours?" And he said, "You just gotta practice, young man." I said, "Okay, that's, I'll do that." But my favorite sport was basketball. Baseball was not my favorite sport playing. I did all right with it. One of the, my mom and dad lived in Old Row up there, and of course, we had no running water and stuff like that when I was growing up. We had a five gallon bucket upstairs that we used in the wintertime. And I remember Joe Consoli, Joe Consoli and Sid Thrift come to my house in Mount Savage. And Joe asked me, said, "Bobby," he said, "I gotta go pee." I said, "You gotta go pee, do ya?" I said, "You see that white building right down there, next to that creek?" I said, "You go right down there and help yourself." 'Cause we didn't have the running water and stuff. And of course, he passed away, but he remembered that, and then when he gave his speeches to the young kids and stuff like that in minor league baseball, he always brought that up, that he was able to, he and Bobby Robertson's outhouse. So, when I signed with the bonus and stuff like that, I was able to put down a downpaimer for mom and dad to go into a house that had running water. I thought that was, I thought that was pretty neat. I used to like to go to Ralph Wilson's house up there, and I said, "Ralph, I gotta go to the bathroom." I really didn't have to go to the bathroom, but I went in there and I kinda looked at that commode, and I did my thing right there, and alls I had to do was push that little handle, and man, that water went down. Man, I'm in high heaven now. So, I learned a lot from Mr. Carter. He influenced me a lot, and he taught me a lot of things. And he's not here tonight, I would assume that he's hip and stuff like that, just bothering him. So, Joe, you're, I'm thinking of you and all that kind of stuff. And I'd like to thank you all for having this day for me. That's pretty neat. The dapper Dan's were nice and stuff like that. But I remember, 'cause a lot of people, Bob Prince one time, kinda screwed his face. I was born in Frostburg. Well, we had a game of the week, and I remember they're sitting on the bench and told them that I was born and raised in Frostburg, but I was raised in Mount Savage. Well, he'd come on the radio or whatever the TV was and said I was from Frostburg, Maryland. I don't know how that went over, but that's the story on that. But after the final game of the 1971 World Series there, people has asked me, "Well, how come I wasn't up on stage?" and all that kind of stuff. Well, Suter Cag and Van Roby was there. And I figured, well, they come in, and I took them back to the trainer's room, because I felt that I owed them something, 'cause Suter wrote a lot of nice articles, and Van had me on the radio and stuff. So, instead of me out there being on national television, I took the two boys back in the trainer's room, and Suter interviewed me, and Van Roby had me on the radio. So, my accomplishments and stuff that I feel is just not for Mount Savage, it was for the whole tri-state area, 'cause it brought interest and stuff. And I think that's what I'm most proud of. And, you know, being surrounded with family and friends and things like that, it don't get any better. Now, I'm, me and the wife up there, we're cutting some wood up and burning it and stuff like that. I'm sort of retired, still looking for work. Right there. Dave called me up and told me I was gonna get this here, and I'm too young to retire. And I said, "Well, if anything ever comes up in the tri-state area, let me know." 'Cause nobody's ever approached me in this area to do something, either for the kids or whatever. And I really don't know the reason why. I can still say my ABCs, I don't have to say them. So, if anything ever does come up around here, you need an old fart like myself to go out and do some PR or any of that kind of stuff, you got my phone number. So, I guess that's about it. But I'm proud of the kids here. Caleb and Colton, you keep up the good work, and maybe one of these days, you be standing up here, you know? So, I thank you all for coming. Like I said, this is pretty quick, but there's memories that I have in baseball. You know, I remember going out to Williams Road, and my grandma had me out there on the weekends, and we'd go out and eat. And I remember laying there on the couch, listening to Clemente and Stargel and all these guys, and then all of a sudden, I find myself on the same bench, running out on the same field. Clemente's here, and I'm going to first, he's going to right field. It don't get any better than that. You know, the good Lord has blessed me in so many ways. And, you know, I'm just proud of just being able to put a uniform on, the injuries cutting, you know, I couldn't do anything about that, but my career was cut pretty short. They called me the next Ralph Kiner. Well, that could've been. But there's one thing I wanna end on. Now, you, not on this film, but somebody keeps talking about me missing a bunt sign? Anybody? Well, there's Tim back there, there's Mr. Tim Civic. He showed up, buddy. He used to be in Maryland State Police, so. But anyway, I remember back then, now I forgot what I was gonna say. You know, when you have to write down where you hide the Easter eggs? This happened. This happened. I don't even know what I was about to say. Come back there, I seen him, and that just took me right out of there. But anyway, I guess it wasn't that in...
Clemente was on second.
Ah, yeah, there you go, thank you. Now, the boys are up. Now, you gotta understand, we're two games down in the World Series. Now, we're playing in Pittsburgh. And I'm thinking, well, okay, I just got done being a platoon with Oliver, I just had 28 homeruns, I guess it was, and drove in 82 runs or whatever. So, you got Willie on first, and you got Clemente on second. I ain't never bunted in my entire life, ever. Right, Colton? So, on the on-deck circle, that's what I always tell Colton and Caleb, that's where you prepare yourself to go hit. Nowadays, they step out of the box five yards, then they get back in there and adjust their gloves and all that kind of stuff. Watch these World Series, and the guy, we had a purpose, get in there, hit pitcher, throw the ball to the plate. You understand what I'm saying? So, I'm there, and I walked over there, I had no idea Quayar was pitching. And I looked down at third base, I didn't see nothing. Real quick, I looked. And all of a sudden, he threw me a screwball, which is the pitcher, I guess you're gonna hang on your wall here. And I hit a 3-1 homer to right field. No right-handed hitters ever hit a ball to right center that far. So, when I was coming around the bases and stuff like that, I went back and sit down on the bench, and Mazzy said, "Bobby," he said, "You know Montesheim was on?" I won't tell you what I told Mazzy. I said, "What?" So, I looked over at Murtaugh, and he has his hat on, his big old belly, he's just laughing. So, as the story goes, a lot of reporters has asked me, "Did you get fined for that?" I said, "No, he didn't find me or anything." And Steve Blas told him, he said, "Well, if it's a fine to be paid, I'll pay it." 'Cause Steve was the pitcher that day. So, how all that come about? What if I'd've seen that bunt sign? What would've happened, me trying to get a bunt down on the astroturf, trying to get Clemente the third and Willie the second base? So, I think there was a little miscommunication going on there. So, people always ask me, "Did you miss the bunt sign?" No, I didn't see it. Sort of. I didn't really stare at it. Let's say I kinda winked that way down there, because we had to get something going. Two games down in the World Series, you nuts? So, it worked out good, and then the playoffs, you know, hit them three homeruns in San Francisco, and Carolyn was there. That was a good day. And I almost had the fourth, hit it off top the fence out there, left center. Willie Mays come to me later, he said, "Bobby, you just run me to death." I said, "Willie, I just seen your number 24 just running all over the place out there trying to catch them balls I hit out there." So, I could've had four. But then I come back to Pittsburgh and hit the one off of Juan Marshall. And then I hit two in the World Series, one off McNally, and the other one was off of Quayar. So, I got a lot of memories, some of them I can remember, some of them I can't. I remember hitting some long homeruns around here, people said I did anyway. The one in particular was one, I guess my family didn't have enough money to get me spikes, so I wore tennis shoes. And I remember playing up in Allegheny, when they played over there next to the school. And some right-handed pitcher, it had rained that day, and it was pretty slippery. But I hit one off that school from back there, you know how they back in that corner they had it? And the only thing I seen when I hit it, the left fielder just kept going. And here I go, running around them bases, just slipping and sliding, but I made it. But I got a chance to play in the Penn Mart League, I think I was only 15 years old. But that made me better, 'cause I was playing against guys that was much better than I was. So, that really helped me out a lot. So, I'm gonna shut up now, that's enough. Get on with your meeting, I just wanted to say thank you.
You have to come on up here.
Oh, okay, I gotta go that way. Oh, I wanna say, I wanted to mention this, 'cause Root Sports come down to Mount Savage. Danny don't know anything about this, but they come down, and they're gonna have this on television, when I don't know, but they was at the house, they seen the trophy room that Janine and Carolyn had fixed up. And then I said, "Well, let's go up and see Joe Carter, my high school coach." So, we went up there, and Joe was sitting in there. So, they interviewed him, and then I took him down in the old row and show them where I grew up and stuff, and I thought that was pretty neat. But the last person here, Chris Miller, I forgot to mention his name on the Root Sports. He's a baseball coach for Donegal out in Mount Joy. He does a great job. And Tim does a great job with the kids. That means I don't have to go up there, because if you get too many mixes in the puddle here, then people get confused. But you're in learning, ain't ya? Huh, both of you? Proud of you, you keep up the good work. Take care of them there, mommy. All right, here we go.
Okay, we have an official proclamation for Bobby here. Whereas Allegheny County native Robert Eugene Bobby Robertson was born in Frostburg, called Mount Savage home during his formative years, and after his professional baseball career concluded, returned to his roots here in Allegheny County. And whereas Bobby Robertson was a professional baseball player for 11 seasons, played 829 games, and was recognized as the Mount Savage strong boy, who could hit a ball out of any park, including Yellowstone. And whereas, as a member of the Pittsburgh Pirates, Bobby debuted in the major leagues on September 18th, 1967, spent one season with the Seattle Mariners, and concluded his career as a Toronto Blue Jay on June 23rd, 1979. And whereas, a natural athlete and a veteran of the United States Marine Corps, Bobby Robertson played with Hall of Fame notables Roberto Clemente, Willie Stargel, and Bill Mazerosky. And whereas Bobby hit three homeruns for the world champion Pittsburgh Pirates in the 1971 World Series, and caught the last out for the 1971 World Series. And whereas Bobby had a postseason homerun record that stood for many years and was involved in three no-hitters during his career. And whereas Bobby Robertson brought and continues to bring positive national media attention to Allegheny County, now therefore, we, the Allegheny County Commissioners, wish to highlight the life of Robert Eugene Bobby Robertson and proclaim the opening day of the 2015 baseball season, Monday, April the 6th, for our star Bobby Robertson Day in Allegheny County, and encourage all individuals to reflect on the achievements and contributions of this native of Allegheny County. This is signed by all three county commissioners, William Valentine, Creed Brody, and Jack Che. Thank you very much. We're about to hit the ball out of Yellowstone Park. Stay up here for a few pictures.
All right, here we go. Hold that up here, get that World Series thing in there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, there's a lot of great ballplayers out there. Ain't got one of these. You know, I'm very proud of this. You know, that's pretty neat.
There you go. Get one more. Very good. Thank you, gentlemen.
Don't run off yet, we got something else.
You see that empty nail over there on the wall?
Yes, sir.
We got a hat on there.
There it is.
There you go, Bobby.
There it is.
There's the picture.
There it is. They, Tim Carney, I forgot to mention his name, he come up to the house to see some of the stuff I had up there, didn't you? And I told him, "The picture here is a front view. On my baseball card, it has it from the side view." When I was inducted into the Maryland Hall of Fame, they gave me a real big picture of this, and they took a, you know, a photo or something off this. You took care of that for me. So, and also the Western Pennsylvania, I'm in the Hall of Fame up there. That's pretty neat. Put them over here.
Hold that up there.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. We got the nail ready for you.
Oh, you want me to put it up there?
Yes, sir.
All right, I don't think I can miss this.
Oh.
No, no. There we go. Why not have the wife put this up there? Don't fall.
Slide it to the left, just a little bit. There you go, there we go.
Hey, I forgot to mention my, see what I'm telling you about right down behind the Easter eggs? Alexa, that's the player, Civic, she's going to Frostburg, and I know Tim's got a lot of socks, and she wants to be a doctor, so she's pretty smart. She's a good electrical student, but she doesn't hit softball or basketball or volleyball plays. So, we just keep them running. Now, I'm looking forward to this too, and Alexa, she's bringing someone along. So, did I miss anybody now?
Well, Grandpap, we got lots of room, 'cause I know you're very proud of your grandchildren, for lots more pictures. So, sir, I most certainly look forward to that.
Let's have a big round for Bobby.
I brought some pictures here, everybody wants some, younger Indians and stuff like that, all signed, so if anybody wants that, I'll put it up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks, you got my own phone number now, right?
We do.
Tim Carney, thank you very much for all your help in pulling this day off, we appreciate it.
Wow. Hey, seeing you later, thank you.
See y'all.
Love you. That's good.
See y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you. You got my own phone number now, right?
We do.
Tim Carney, thank you very much for all your help in pulling this day off, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks. Wow. Hey, seeing you later, thank you.
See y'all.
That's good.
See y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Wow. Hey, seeing you later, thank you.
See y'all.
Love you. That's good.
See y'all.
Thank you.
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 Thank you.[1584.33] The first place prize is $200. The second, third, fourth, and fifth place prizes are $150, $100, $75, and $50. So, they, the students are to buy, promote green environmental products within their school, maybe videos or plant a tree or something, you know, environmental. So, I think that's all of the... Oh, the students, actually, middle and high school students who participate in the preparation, action, and reflection of the Telephone Book Campaign can earn service learning credits in the school. So, it's kind of a real-world project that promotes environmental awareness. On the, the second note, I would like to enter, announce that the Allegheny County Compost Site, located at 11700 PPG Road in Cumberland, will begin the summer hours Wednesday, April 1st, and those days are Wednesday through Sunday from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Items accepted are brush, grass, leaves, limbs no larger than four inches in diameter. They do not accept stumps and rubble, demolition, garbage tires, of course. And residents of Allegheny County may take the compost free of charge, but they do have to load it. There's no equipment available for loading. So, that's events for the recycling.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Terry.
And now we have a, another guest here with us this evening, Mr. Chip McCloud. He's, has a law firm that has been working on behalf of the Clean Chesapeake Coalition, which is a group of counties that got together about three years ago looking for more effective and more efficient ways to help clean the Chesapeake Bay.
Thank you, Commissioners, and what a treat it was to watch the recognition of your, your favorite son there. I mean, that, that's special, a celebrity like that in person, so that was great. Well, thank you for the opportunity to be here to update you on the activities of the Clean Chesapeake Coalition this current fiscal year. And if I may, just, just to give everybody some context on the Clean Chesapeake Coalition, and just by its name involving the Chesapeake Bay, and, and here we are in Allegheny County, quite some distance from the Chesapeake Bay. But, three years ago, a group of counties joined forces and resources to begin, to try to push back on some of the mandates and regulations that were coming down from the federal and state government that were very expensive and what the counties believed were unlikely to really improve water quality. And, and it seemed like at that time, the local governments didn't have a very strong voice in be able to recommend and, and come up with new ideas on what they thought would work well in their local governments to do their part to help the environment, and particularly the Chesapeake Bay. Since 2010, when the Environmental Protection Agency established what they call a pollution diet for the bay, the Chesapeake Bay TMDL, Maryland has been very aggressively pushing that program to improve the bay, and for good reason. But Maryland decided to put the county governments at the front line of doing that. Other bay states, Pennsylvania, New York, Virginia, the states are really doing that. Maryland pushed it down under the county governments, and, and when that happened, county governments said, "Well, wait a minute." And the local officials in the counties said, "Wait, we might have some ideas that might work better before we just take blindly all these mandates that are very expensive." So, since the counties formed, it started with seven counties, now there are 10. I'll name them quickly for the benefit of the audience. Currently, in this fiscal year, Allegheny, Carroll, Frederick, Harford, Cecil, Kent, Queen Anne's, Dorchester, Caroline, and Wycomico County. And I will run through, we, a memo random was just sent out by the chairman of the Coalition, Kent County Commissioner Ron Fithian, and I'll just run down the list, because in that memo, Commissioner Fithian provided some highlights of activities that have been going on this year. We have remained actively involved in the relicensing of Conawingo Dam, which is situated in the Lower Sesquahanna River. They are subject to relicensing by the federal government, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. We've been involved in that because the amount of pollution that's coming down the Sesquahanna and over the Conawingo Dam is really eclipsing some of the efforts Marylanders, all the counties, are doing to improve water quality. So, bringing attention to that issue, because it really hasn't been seriously addressed, and it really should be. We were very closely monitoring a study called the Lower Sesquahanna River Watershed Assessment, because that study was supposed to involve and, and inform the relicensing of the dam. Well, what happened is that study really wasn't done particularly well, and, and, and we were able to convince the Maryland Department of the Environment to require an additional study, because that study didn't cut it. And frankly, that study was gerrymandered to come up with a result that basically said to the county governments, and I, I don't, basically said, "Shut up and just do your whips. Do the things we told you to do, because dredging Conawingo Pond is, is, is not cost-effective." We're going to continue to respectfully disagree with that analysis, because there is no larger source of pollution to the bay than the Sesquahanna River. And we can do a lot in Maryland, all the counties, and even Allegheny County is under certain mandates to do things in the name of saving the bay. We can do all that, and, and it may be in vain. So, we followed that. We are involved in the Maryland Public Service Commission that is currently considering a merger between Exelon and Pepco, two large utilities. The reason for the Coalition Counties to be part of that is we think if the Public Service Commission is going to approve that merger, they should look at Conawingo Dam as a facility of Exelon's and make sure that their environmental storage ship track record there is right. I mean, has that company operated and maintained that facility the best that they could? And so far to this date, the owner of Conawingo Dam has refused to do any kind of maintenance dredging of the reservoir above the dam, and that's the problem. There's, there's 85 years of accumulated pollution sitting in, above that dam, and every time there's a storm, it, it really undermines the efforts Marylanders are doing to protect the bay. We, we initiated an, an initiative about getting more oysters in the Chesapeake Bay because of, as a best management practice, so people know a single oyster will filter 50 gallons of water a day. EPA says if Maryland, if you could increase the population of oysters in the Chesapeake Bay tenfold, you would pull out 10 million pounds of nitrogen a year. Maryland's goal under the Bay TMDL for nitrogen reduction is 11.8 million. So, if you look at just dredging Conawingo Dam and stopping all the pollution that comes when there's a storm, and you get more oysters in the bay, Maryland could meet all of its EPA goals that way. Now, those are two things the state of Maryland didn't consider when they were mandating on counties, "Here's how you're going to save the bay. You're going to regulate septic. You're going to put in various sport, important, you know, very expensive stormwater retrofits and things like that." And that's really the rub. These counties are trying to show some other alternatives to really helping the bay that maybe are more cost-effective and, and would produce more results. We're involved in legislation, things that are, are consistent with the Coalition mission. We, we were very active in the phosphorus management tool regulations. I don't know how much up here, but the farming community was very upset about these proposed PMT regulations. We, we were involved in that, and in fact, several of the agricultural advocacy groups were using research that we had done to show if you really want, if you're really concerned about phosphorus, look at what's going on at Conawingo. Don't harass the farmers anymore. Maryland farmers have done more than any pollution sector to help the Chesapeake Bay. And I don't know how much more that, that industry can take. And a lot of the Coalition Counties that are steeped in agriculture or commercial seafood harvesting. When you look at the harvesters, the Maryland SEAL has a farmer and a waterman, the seafood harvesters and the land harvesters. Most of the Coalition Counties have either one or both of those as an important part of their local economy. And some meetings we've had that we think help give the, give the Coalition Counties a, a platform and always looking for a seat at the table, because again, county governments in Maryland, when it comes to the bay cleanup and how best to do it, local governments have had to fight tooth and nail to get a seat at the table. We've met with the new Attorney General, Mr. Frosch, so he understands the, the issues of concern to the Coalition Counties. We met with Lieutenant Governor Rutherford during the transition, and in fact, they were, they looked forward to, to talking to the Coalition Counties, because Governor Hogan actually used a number of the Coalition platforms during his campaign. And we were certainly happy to see that as, as sort of validation of the, of the message. We, we also have met with Exelon, and I mentioned earlier, Conawingo Dam. Exelon is the utility that owns Conawingo Dam, and I think the Coalition has been at this long enough now and has gotten the message out that, that, that Exelon thought it was important to meet with the Coalition and understand. And, and we actually came away from that meeting realizing there might be more we have in common than not. You know, dredging Conawingo Dam, as good as that would be for the, for the, for downstream and the Maryland portion of the bay, it's not going to happen anytime soon. So, the real discussion is, what in the meantime do we do now that we know there's all this extra pollution coming, because there's no trapping capacity? So, we like to believe that if we can continue to talk to Exelon, there might be things they're willing to do to show true environmental storage ship to help Maryland local governments because of what's happening up in the Lower Sesquahanna River. And then finally, we recently met with the new Secretary of DNR, Mark Belton, of the Department of Natural Resources. That agency is very important to a number of the Coalition issues, and, and we came away with that basically feeling like, what a breath of fresh air, that actually, local governments may have a shot at having a, a realist voice and seat at the table under the new administration. Now, these things change too, but, but at least we feel like, you know, hey, maybe the message is out there, and, and now there's a, there's a role for local governments to have some good input and, and, and not be subject to some cost inefficient mandates that really aren't going to do much to help water quality. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and I appreciate the opportunity to update you all.
Thank you, Chip.
Thanks, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move along to item number four. Jason Bennett, please.
Sorry I don't have any video for you or anything. No sports, just taxes.
Anything exciting out of the finance office? Any little short clips?
No, we're not allowed to have excitement.
Oh, okay. Very good.
For the best. Tonight is our constant yield hearing. As you know, every year, the, the state of Maryland calculates the amount of tax that would equate to the constant yield to give us the same tax dollars as last year. We had to run an ad as part of state law in the paper on March 16th, and what I have up here on the screen is the ad that ran in the paper. So, before we have the hearing, I just briefly want to explain where we're at, and, and I'm actually going to focus a little more on page two here, if I can get down to it. So, according to state law, if there's any tax rates that we have that are in excess of the constant yield, we have to advertise and have the public hear. So, that's what we're doing tonight. Our assessments are up actually a half percent from last year, so that resulted in a constant yield rate for the county of 97.37 per dollar. We're actually at 97.80. As you know, we've reduced the tax rate in each of the last five years, so we're getting closer and closer to that constant yield tax rate. Right now, only Cumberland and Luke's County tax rate are below the constant yield. The rest are just ever so slightly above, as you can, as you can see from the chart. The unincorporated rate, which is the one we have to advertise based on, that's all the residents that live outside of municipalities in the county. It is $93,000 in excess of the constant yield, so that's why we had to run the ad. Do want to point out, I think the ad's actually, excuse me, a little bit misleading. All in all, if you focus on the bottom rate number, if you can see it, we're collecting $238,000 less than we were in prior years. Check that. I think you're the wrong number. $246,000 less than prior years. So, all in all, we're actually collecting less taxes than in the past. This is a state law and it kind of, a little bit of a technicality. So, you know, we'll continue just, just as you want us to. We'll continue to reduce the tax rate slowly. We're getting closer and closer to the constant yield. And tonight is essentially our hearing, so if anyone's signed up to talk about this, it'll be their time for their comment.
We have one, one person signed up about tax rate. Is this the issue you wanted to talk about? Mrs. Brent? Is this the issue you wanted to talk about?
I thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak tonight. Money is very important to me, as it is to you all too. I want to commend the county commissioners in the previous years, including Commissioner McKay. It's my understanding that you held to the constant rate, but I'm hearing different things tonight, so maybe, maybe you can straighten me out. I just want to say, there are two, two ways, two, two elements to arrive at your property tax in this county. The one is the assessment. The state comes in and tells the county how much all of the property is worth. It does it every three, three years, so it rotates, and in that three years, it gets the whole county. The other element is the constant rate. So, you, or the constant rate or the rate that you count, Commissioner set, and that's multiplied together, the value of your property plus times the constant rate. And we have a lot of retired people here, a lot, many, many on fixed income. They cannot, they cannot afford more taxes. They're taxing this, they're taxing that. The sewers, sewage bills went up. It's just everything is going up, every place. And I'm just speaking on their behalf. I don't, not as a representative, but it is hard sometimes to pay these bills and these taxes. So, what, and, and people have options. This county is a stone's throw from West Virginia, and, and some of my coworkers, when I was working, already have taken advantage of moving. And our census, as I understand it, is going down. And, and I think the, the Cumberland census is going down as well. And so, without jobs and high tax, if we keep taxes high, we're not going to be able to hold our, our population. We've consolidated schools, we've consolidated hospitals, and, and I know a lot of these problems are difficult to deal with. So, in, in finishing up here, I just want to appeal to our commissioners to keep the tax rate down to the constant yield. See if you cannot have to raise it. Let me, let me look at my paper here. You're talking about raising it 93,814 additional dollars. It's a .4% higher than the constant yield. I mean, that's in your proposal, and if, if you pass that, you know, that gives you the right to go ahead and do that. My proposal, my challenge, is to you three gentlemen here, to keep it at the constant rate. We need to keep our population here. We're hoping for jobs and our children to stay here, and taxes are a big issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just, just use the microphone there and mention your name and your address, please, for us.
Nancy Brent, Bedford Road, Cumberland, Maryland.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody else who wishes to speak on this?
If I might, just to, just to clarify. Mrs. Brent references not a $93,000 increase. She's right in part, that's the excluding towns line you see there, so that's the unincorporated areas. You're right, it actually does go up a little bit based on the tax rate we're proposing. But all in all, county laws will actually collect 246,000, or I'm sorry, reading the wrong number, yeah, $246,000 less than last year. So, in the grand total, we are actually collecting less. Moving the rate down, because of tax differential, we probably always have some that are slightly above, but all in all, we are moving it down. We're the only county in the state that's gone down. I think there's only been one county in the last five years that even have one year of a tax decrease. We've had it five straight, and it is small, but we're, I think these Commissioners have committed to continuing to chip down at that rate, so. So, hope that makes sense. It's kind of a confusing thing.
It is indeed.
It's confusing state law that we have to follow to the teeth. We have to send the entire ad to the state. They have to approve it. So, confusing topic.
Excellent.
Any other questions?
Nope. Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Okay, gentlemen, we'll move into our action agenda. Item number five, introduction of Code Home Rule Bill 3-15. Mr. Rudd?
Oh, yes, this is, this is the proposed introduction of a code bill. This could be a little bit confusing. So, there, there's a provision in the county code dealing with something called the Nursing Home Board of Allegheny County that has absolutely nothing to do with the county's old nursing home that we sold. Back in the 60s or whatever, when Lyons Manor Nursing Home was established, the legislature passed a public local law applying in Maryland that allowed the county commissioners to appoint a board to establish a nursing home, and then the commissioner stepped back and did nothing. They, they had no other responsibility once they created that board. That board created the Lyons Manor Nursing Home that we all know up next to where Sacred Heart used to be. They now want to transfer from, this, it's a, this board that the commissioners initially appointed, it's been self-perpetuating since then. Basically, they want to transfer the assets of that nursing home to a private nonprofit that will then go on about its business and get rid of this antiquated deal that was done back in the 60s. So, this bill, the be hearing next week, where they'll explain more about it, basically authorizes the transfer of the assets from the Nursing Home Board of Allegheny County to what is going to be the Lyons Manor nonprofit nursing home, basically. So, that's what's being proposed. Today's an introduction, obviously be hearing next week, and then you'll vote on a later legislative day.
Basically, just a house cleaning, nothing?
Pretty much, that's what it is, yes.
Technically, it would be two weeks.
That's true.
April the 9th.
Yeah, sure.
Do we need an introduction to?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to move forward with this Code Home Rule Bill?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item number six, Code Home Rule Bill 4-15. Mr. Rudd?
All right. This is a bill authorizing the county commissioners to, this will be the introduction. There's proposed be hearing on the 9th, where a lot more information will be provided. This is authorizing the sale of two parcels of real estate back here in the Riverside Industrial Park to a, an entity called Peak Harvest LLC.
And this is the property we discussed selling probably three, four weeks ago. All right, gentlemen, do we have a motion move forward with the Code Home Rule Bill 4-15?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Dorsey, you must think you're up next. Please.
As you know, on December 20th, the Planning and Zoning Commission did vote to recommend that the county commissioners amend the county code parking standards to be nine by 18 feet in dimensions. And that also applies to the Lavelle zoning district, and I think Mr. Rudd's going to introduce this matter.
Yes, as, as the Commissioners are aware, there's this, still a separation between the Lavelle zoning and the county zoning. What you did a couple of weeks ago was a code bill. What you did a couple of weeks ago was a code bill that amended the county zoning ordinance to deal with the parking. This is to finish up the part and make it Lavalz parking consistent, which you all have control over that ordinance now. The hearings that already took place apply to this process as well, so today, before it was a motion to basically let the Lavalz ordinance be amended to have the same parking standards as the county ordinance.
Gentlemen, do we have a motion to move Lavalz zoning ordinance into line with the rest of the county?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just for clarification, as to the parking?
Yes.
Thank you.
As long as we don't move Lavalz, that's all.
Not moving.
Okay.
Well, we just might move Lavalz. Okay, we'll move along to item number eight, Allegheny County 2015 Priority Letter to Maryland Department of Transportation. Ms. Sierra Wigfield.
Hello, good evening. So, the county's priority letter is our way for the local jurisdictions to express their local priorities for capital projects to MDOT, and these projects will be considered in MDOT's six-year capital planning, which is called the Consolidated Transportation Program. So, representatives from the county and municipalities met on March 18th and prioritized all 15 items on our list, and we came to an agreement, and I'm asking you to sign your letter, hoping you agree with it, and so we can send it along to MDOT. I've requested the mayors and the Western Maryland delegation to sign the letter as well.
Gentlemen, do we have a motion to take care of this letter for Sierra?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And now we'll go to Cumberland Area Metropolitan Planning Organization.
Yes, so, as part of the 2015 Cumberland Urbanized Area Planning Work Program, the city of Frostburg requested we look at the intersection of Main Street, Beaker Street, and Center Street, and the plan, right now, we're trying to get, I want to advertise for the RFP to get a consultant to provide recommendations to improve the safety of that intersection. As you know, there's a lot of businesses and crossing, it's kind of not very safe currently, so I'm requesting to put an advertisement for the RFP.
Gentlemen, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And since you're on the roll, you might as well move right into Transit Title VI.
Yeah, the transit has to comply with Title VI, which is non-discrimination in all services and activities. Our Title VI plan includes non-discrimination policy, how to file a Title VI complaint in the resolution process, and also how the transit deals with limited English proficiency populations. So this plan has us in compliance, but we just need the Commissioners' approval, so I've requested you adopt the plan this evening.
Gentlemen, do we have a motion to adopt the new plan?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You may be seated.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Dave, the consent agenda, please.
Commissioners, brief consent agenda this evening. First item, item number 11, just deals with our annual exercise to approve the community partnership agreement with the state of Maryland. And last but not least, our desire to unload a bucket of bolts, which is a 2003 Ford Explorer, and currently is assigned to the Department of Human Resources and Personnel Services, and we'd like to surplus that for sale.
Gentlemen, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we'll move into constituent comments. Mr. Wilmot?
I live at 513 Ford Avenue, Cumberland, Maryland. I'm here to speak on the budget for the year 2015. I was reading through it, and I came across something that disturbs me quite radically to my, it's unbelievable. The animal shelter in the last three years, 2013 got $298,758,000. 2014, it got $315,000. The next year, 2015, we're going to give them $360,918 of the taxpayers' money for these people to play with cats and dogs. We've got nothing in return from this shelter, nothing positive. The last four years I've been speaking up on the shelter, I got accused of making unsubstantiated accusations, although the past year proved all that wrong. The shelter had at least six weeks to go out and pick up those nine dogs and they didn't do it. Total dysfunction. Now then, 2013 up to 2014, in 2014, we had an increase of $16,242. Now then, coming up in the year 2015, we got an increase of $45,918. That's a 300% increase. What in the world do these people need all this money for out there at the shelter? Our city is overrun with cats and barking dogs. You go out there, complain, I'll give you a real good example why I'm here. Two years ago, I went to the advisory board. The ladies, at the time, was the president, she's now dead, she died here in Mrs. Ily. Anyway, I brought it to their attention. I have a relative who has hoarding cats up on Irons Mountain. There's 26 cages of feral cats, total filth. That was two years ago. I reported it to the advisory board like I was advised by Mr. McKay. To this day, nothing's happened, nothing. I went last week to the advisory board meeting, and I told them about it. Well, now then, the old put-off, well, you didn't fill out an affidavit. So I get handed an affidavit. What good that affidavit going to do me? When I went to advisory board meeting, Mr. Brubaker was standing right there, and I told him where they were, so he'd check on it. Two months later, the next meeting, I brought it up at the meeting to Mrs. Ily, and I said, what about the investigation on Irons Mountain with all the cats? And so she looks at Mr. Brubaker and she says, what's going on? Oh, it's under investigation. I said, how long are you going to investigate? I said, it's only about six miles out to Irons Mountain. That's all I've received so far. I don't think I should have to fill out any affidavit when I go to an official government board and tell them where a person is hoarding cats and dogs, or cats. It's unbelievable. Now, I would like an explanation as to why we've got a 300% increase on their budget, if I could get one.
Where are you coming up with 300%?
Well, from 2013 to 2014, they got a $16,242 increase. $45,918, that's three times, that's 300% increase.
Jason, go to second.
Yeah, can I clarify just one thing? 2013, there was actually two budgets for the animal shelter. There was the Animal Control Office and the Animal Shelter, and you had those two together to get roughly $372,000.
That's not the way it's listed in here.
Yeah, we consolidated the next year and just made one line.
Anyway, that's still an increase.
That includes animal control.
Yeah, we consolidated animal control.
But where's this money coming from for the increase?
There actually wasn't an increase from 2013, it actually went down just a bit.
Well, according to the figures read out of your book, that's a $16,242 increase.
Right there. This one goes to zero. We said we consolidated as we shifted.
How's anybody supposed to make heads or tails of that kind of accounting?
One cabinet here.
It's a joke. The taxpayer, I own eleven pieces of property, every day I watch ten cats patrol my property. They don't bring cats in, they throw them back out on the road. I see no rea, they should be reducing the budget for that place. They got all these bragging rights, oh, we're rescuing 6,000, 10,000 animals, when actually they're just putting them out on the road and calling it rescue.
Thank you, Mr. Wilmot.
Thanks, Jason. Okay.
Thanks, Chase.
Reminders of, the next meeting will be Thursday, April 9th. Gentlemen, do you have any further comments, Jake?
Yeah, just on the constant yield rate, you know, how they make us advertise in the newspapers is they make us put the constant yield rate in of what it would be, but that's not really the tax rate, so as Mr. Bennett explained, year to year, the tax rate's going down, you're going to see a decrease. On that side, no, it will depend on your assessment, and you may see an increase if your assessment goes up. And hopefully, what we're going to do in the coming months is lower our threshold for homestead eligibility from 7%, hopefully down to 4%, so that more people be eligible and you won't feel as much of an increase. And we have a friend from the city of Cumberland, Sean Hirschberger is here. Thank you for coming, and thank you for working with us on some of these projects, and, you know, the footer building as well, let's take cooperation between the city, the county, and the delegation to get some delegation bills and some funds, and we're looking forward to helping you on that.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Great.
Certainly. There is something I was going to talk about tonight, but I think I'm going to let it go until next week because we've had a very good meeting, it was great to honor Bobby Robinson, a local hero, but I do want to tell you something I got to see at our Community Relations Board meeting the other day at FCI, was dogs that was trained to help people that can't stand, to stand up. They had them where they could turn the light switches on and off for people, the gentleman stood up for someone that has trouble getting dressed, the dog was able to take his jacket off and pick it up and put it on a chair for him. And this is run through, it was impressive, they could take the shoes off these people, and it was all designed for service dog work, and I'd never seen anything such as this, but when, and it's a sought-after job at FCI to become one of these handlers, and then when they get done and get done their term, the people that handle the dogs are accredited as this, and then the dogs go all over the country for an application where they suit the dog with a person of need. So, talk about something very impressive, want to commend Warden Stewart on his efforts in that and keeping that in our community, because that was, he really showcased something out there, so, thank you.
Good news.
I'll keep my remarks very short. This week, Dave and I attended a student forum at Frostburg University. That night, they were reaching out to county leadership and Frostburg city leadership to get more of a partnership, let's say, between government and the student body up there, the student body during the school year, actually makes up about 50% of the population of Frostburg, yet they feel they have no voice in the town, so they're working to improve those relationships. They're going to have the same type of forum for state government to meet with the student body, and then they'll even have a federal government meeting with the state body. I think that's really, really good, and then tomorrow afternoon, Dave and I will also be taking part in an event where they're doing a search for a new president at Frostburg University, and I think it's very important that we end up with the proper person in that job. Bad to see Dr. Gibraltar moving along, I think he did a real fine job at that university, but he's moving along, so they are in a search for a new president at Frostburg, and the county will be working along with the university on that. With that, if there's nothing else, we'll see everybody on April 9th. Thank you.